Eight, seven.
Thank you. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm calling the meeting to order at seven thirty-one P. M. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, we have no requests under Roll Call Item A. Let me do the roll call now. Councilmember Cunningham?
Here.
Councilmember Davis is absent. Councilmember Lentz?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Here. Legal counsel Roush, can we get a report out from closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Council had three items on for closed session tonight. One concerning the liability claim Sylvester and the council did approve that claim. Second item was a conference with real property negotiator concerning parking lot at parcel number oh oh seven, two seven one oh five oh, and council provided direction to staff. And the third item was conference with legal counsel concerning pending litigation, City of Brisbane versus County of San Mateo. And in that matter, council gave direction to staff as well. That concludes the reporting out on the closed session for this evening.
Thank you. Can I get a first and a second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
Some of them.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one. Great. That moves us on to awards and presentations. And we will start with Suicide Prevention Month for two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the City of Brisbane will join the county, state, and country in honoring Suicide Prevention Month September, National Suicide Prevention Week September eighth through fourteenth, and World Suicide Prevention Day September tenth to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas in two thousand and twenty-three, sixty-five people died by suicide in San Mateo County, and sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight calls were received by the San Mateo County Crisis Line, run by Star Vista Crisis Center, including one thousand and thirty-three, which is six percent of the calls routed through nine eight eight. And whereas the City of Brisbane residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words of support, and reaching out to local resources, including San Mateo County Crisis Line by Star Vista Crisis Center, and calling six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero. You can also call or text nine eight eight or visit sanmateocrisis.org. And whereas the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Office of Diversity and Equity Suicide Prevention Committee and Partners are collectively organizing activities that our community can participate throughout September Suicide Prevention Month, including free, in-person, and virtual events, advocacy days, and communication campaign. The two thousand and twenty-four theme is love over loneliness. Ongoing updates posted at W W W S M C Suicide Prevention dot com. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Brisbane hereby designates September two thousand and twenty-four as Suicide Prevention Month.
Recording in progress.
And calls upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. To accept the proclamation is Behavioral Health Commissioner Youth Advisory Board Member Colin Chu. Is calling with us tonight. Would you like to come up? You can come up here. You're welcome. And you're certainly welcome to say a few words.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, city manager, staff, and residents of Brisbane. My name is Michael Lim, and I use pronouns he/him/his. I'm a member of the San Mateo County's Behavioral Health Commission, and I'm also part of the Suicide Prevention Committee. I am accompanied here this evening by a very bright youth from our community to help us do our work, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Colin Chu. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a member of the San Mateo County Behavioral Health Commission Youth Advisory Board, and here on behalf of the San Mateo County Suicide Prevention Committee with Michael.
Firstly, thank you to the City of Brisbane for joining other cities and the county in proclaiming two thousand and twenty-four September Suicide Prevention Month. Suicide Prevention Month is one of the best times of the year where we can honor those affected by suicide and inspire action to prevent suicide.
As you mentioned, the two thousand and twenty-four Suicide Prevention Month statewide theme is love over loneliness. Our San Mateo County Board of Supervisors passed a resolution in January declaring loneliness a public health crisis and pledging to promote social connection in our communities. According to the two thousand and twenty-three San Mateo County Health and Quality of Life Survey, forty-five percent of respondents in San Mateo County residents were experiencing difficulty with loneliness and isolation.
And September Suicide Prevention Month is especially important to me because both myself and my family are touched with suicide ideation. My son, at a tender age of twelve, when he was in middle school, told me when I was tucking him to bed that he doesn't want to live anymore. As you well can imagine, that that is a pretty disturbing thought. I myself, too, later in the years, do suffer from suicide ideation. And thankfully, we seek help in time, and I'm happy to report that both of us are still here with us today.
September Suicide Prevention Month is important to me because it uplifts and upholds the powerful message that no one is alone in their mental health journeys and that we all stand together to promote understanding, reduce stigma, and engage in difficult yet inspiring conversations. So starting today, I invite you to take action on one or more options. First, learn the signs of suicide. Two, save on your phone the National Crisis and Suicide Lifeline, nine eight eight, or the Star Vista Crisis Height Line, six five zero five seven nine zero three five zero. And three, offer support to those who are struggling and remind people that help is available. You can get more information to take above actions at S M C Suicide Prevention dot com. Thank you so much to the Brisbane community for recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to a proclamation, Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month Proclamation, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the City of Brisbane recognizes and proclaims September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South Americas, and includes indigenous people from throughout the Americas. Whereas the month includes the Independence Days of several Latin American countries, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, Chile, and Belize. And whereas the Latino community comprises the largest racial or ethnic group in the United States, with the largest population living in California and represents twenty-four percent of San Mateo County's total population. Whereas the theme for two thousand and twenty-four is pioneers of change shaping the future together. And whereas we recognize the significant strides of Hispanics in the economic, political, and social growth of the United States that has led to increasing political representation and economic success in areas from local business owners to CEOs of Fortune five hundred companies and small startups to Pulitzer and Nobel Prize winners. And now therefore be it resolved that City Council hereby proclaims the month of September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Hispanic and Latinx Heritage Month. And here we have, to accept the proclamation, is longtime Brisbane business owner and proud member of the Brisbane Eagles, Rafael Meza of Melissa's Taqueria via Zoom.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, looks like we're having technical difficulties with Rafael Zoom.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Hopefully, we can... Are we going to try to get him back in a little bit, or we'll just go ahead and give this to him virtually?
Rafael, would you like to unmute? Perhaps we can try again later, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So that will move us on to Caltrain Electrification Update Presentation. We have Devon Ryan and Bella Conforti via Zoom joining us.
Hi, Bella and Devon. Can you hear us?
Hello, yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead and share your screen.
Oh, sorry about that. Did you say I'm able to share my screen?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. Give me one moment. I apologize. My computer's being a little bit slow here, but hopefully everyone can see my screen. Quick introduction. My name is Bella Conforti. I am a Government and Community Affairs Specialist at Caltrain. I'm joined by my colleague Devon Ryan, Government and Community Affairs Officer. We are filling in for our colleague Sam Sargent, who unfortunately had a last-minute emergency come up. So just wanted to say thank you for letting us join via Zoom. We're super excited to share a little bit more about our electrification and city partnerships with you all. We also wanted to give a special thank you to Mayor O'Connell and Councilmember Lentz, who serve on our Local Policymakers Group. So we recognize that many of you are, you know, very familiar with the Caltrain system, so I'll keep this a little bit more high level. We have seventy-seven miles of operating from San Francisco all the way down to Gilroy. We have thirty-one stations in twenty cities across three counties. Our average weekday ridership is around twenty-four thousand, and this is down from our pre-pandemic levels of around seventy thousand. Correlating with that, our pre-pandemic fare box recovery was seventy-three percent and is now at twenty-three percent. And so with that, we've implemented a number of different ridership growth and cost containment actions to help find, you know, various solutions to help mitigate that gap. Unfortunately, I don't have time to go into all of these in great detail, but you can find more information on our website. I do want to note that a lot of these are really focused on diversifying ridership across the corridor. So some of the actions that really lend themselves to that are our revised schedule, regional coordination, as well as our Pass Forward program. Pass Forward is actually a project that I work very closely on, and with this we give no-cost passes to equity priority communities who wouldn't normally be able to access our system. We also recently adopted a one-dollar youth pass. And so I've gone to, you know, speak with so many young members of our community who have said this has been, you know, such a game changer for them. Another reason that we're incredibly excited to be here with you at this specific time is we're actually on the cusp of a big transformational moment for us happening this weekend. We're launching our full-electric passenger service. As you all know, this was, this project was a long time coming, and there were so many, you know, really amazing people who worked on it, and we can't wait to, you know, have this be accessible for all of our community members. And I'll go into a little bit more detail in a couple slides about how we're going to be celebrating and how you all can be involved. Here are just a couple photos that outline some of the amazing hard work that went into making this project a reality. And as you can see, there were a number of milestones that had to be met over the years to get us where we are with our next incredibly exciting milestone being fully-electric passenger service, like I said, which is happening this weekend. So there are a number of amazing benefits that come with electrified service. Again, unfortunately, I don't have time to go into all of them, but if you want to know more of the details, you can go to our website. You know, just a few that I think are really impactful are twenty percent more train service, free Wi-Fi, as well as improved local air quality. And going into some Brisbane-specific benefits. So at Bayshore Station, we're going from forty-six stops per weekday all the way up to seventy-five. So really proud of that number. And then trip speeds will also be increasing. So there'll be eleven minutes saved going from Bayshore to Palo Alto, and then eighteen minutes saved going from Bayshore to San Jose. You know, obviously, it's really exciting to see those numbers, and, you know, they really, really do add up for people who are making this commute regularly. We've had a number of celebrations so far. Over the past year, we've done various train tours where members of the community have been able to see them before they've been in motion. And then we had our first electric train ride a few weeks ago where we were joined by, you know, a bunch of incredible people who helped make this happen. As you can see, we have Gavin Newsom and Nancy Pelosi. They were both able to join us. So that was, you know, incredibly exciting to just really see the investment and excitement that this project has brought. So looking forward to this weekend. We want to say thank you again to Mayor O'Connell, who's going to be at Bayshore Station from one to one-thirty on Sunday, giving some remarks. We would love if you all would be able to join us. You know, our Bayshore events could be very exciting, and then we're also having two bigger events in Palo Alto on Saturday, and then one in San Mateo on Sunday. We're also going to be having a number of events along the corridor, which you can find on our website. Of course, these are all going to be family-friendly, so, you know, bring your kids, bring your friends, anyone who's interested. We're so excited to celebrate with you all. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Devon Ryan to talk a little bit more about our city partnerships.
Thanks, Bella. Can you advance the slide? So I want to talk a little bit about just the critical role that city partnerships make to Caltrain. This is everything for us. It helps us expand service. It helps us serve the community. Next slide, Bella. And so we've developed a Caltrain City Partnership Toolkit. This is available at our website, caltrain.com/citypartnership. This is helping us create vibrant, diverse, people-centered communities across our corridor. And the goals are really, you know, the same goals that, you know, we both share, which is reducing traffic and parking demand, incentivizing workers to return to the office, but then also, you know, making our services available in the midday for like people with different, that have different schedules, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which helps all communities, and, you know, employee recruitment and retention is another major goal. Next slide, Bella. And so partnership models, you know, these are examples of things that, you know, we're really focused on that we work closely with cities on. For example, supporting our Go Pass program with city workers, looking into station access, you know, not just sort of the traditional ideas of accessibility, but also, you know, how are you accessing the stations via, you know, scooter, via bike, via car? You know, how can we get more focus on the train to manage communities more efficiently? Next slide. And so, again, we do apologize that Sam was not able to be here with us here tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions. We really thank you for your time. And just want to reiterate again just how excited we are about this milestone and how grateful we are for the cities and the engagement of everybody in Brisbane and everybody along the corridor that has helped us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
No questions, just a comment, and I just want to
Sure.
say that I'm super stoked that finally, you know, I know it was a long time coming. Yeah, there's, yeah, we're gonna have it on this date, and then, oh, no, it's gonna be this date. But, you know, having Caltrain electrified is a huge, huge milestone. And I know that your ridership is a lot less than what it was before the pandemic, but hopefully, you know, having the train be electrified, reducing the commuter time for folks going from either San Francisco down to San Jose, and then just, you know, having no exhaust, right? I mean, it's just so much better for the environment from that standpoint. So keep doing all those, those other incentives to get folks to take the train. I think it's awesome that you have that program for youth because if the youth are getting a deal riding the train, then that becomes, you know, muscle memory for them, and riding public transit is something that they want to continue to do rather than be like their parents and, you know, use the car. So thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just think it's important to also take the opportunity to recognize we learned at a recent Peninsula Clean Energy Board meeting that Caltrain has entered into a very important partnership with Peninsula Clean Energy, providing the electricity to electrify this part of the line. And we're very grateful for that, and it shows continuing support between the two entities. An important partnership for the county, so I'd like to show some appreciation and recognition in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this great milestone.
Yes, and we'll see you on Sunday.
Madam Mayor, we do have a hand raised from CMF.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Hi there. This is Chris Florkowski. I want to thank the Caltrain team for all of the work that they've been doing for a very, very long time to bring us to this point, and I greatly appreciate it. I've been enjoying the train, the new trains, and ride them whenever I can. One of our challenges in Brisbane, as I'm sure you're familiar, is our first and last mile. It's two and a quarter miles from our Old County Road and visitation to the Caltrain station. So that's not, people can't walk. And it is true that we have a commute.org shuttle, a free shuttle, but it is really leaning in the direction of supporting the people who need to commute to Brisbane, not for the residential commute. And I brought this up at the commute.org meeting quite simply. And I brought this up at the commute.org meeting quite some time ago, and I'm sure Cliff remembers this.
Yes, I do.
We've seen the new schedule, and it's still leaning in the direction of prioritizing incoming transportation, not outgoing. It's certainly better than the past. It was a 55-minute wait on occasion for the next train, but it's still 20 minutes, and the Bay Shore Station is not exactly the most hospitable, especially when it's cold and wet. So I would hope that we could find some ways to expand the commute.org shuttle system or look for some other creative solutions in order to address that first last mile. And Caltrain, if you've got any suggestions for us, please offer them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. We don't have anyone else online, and we don't normally take public comment on presentations. But as we've gone ahead and done that, do we have anyone else online?
No, Madam Mayor. We do have Rafael Mesa that's waiting in the wings when it's for the next item.
So thank you very much for your presentation, and we look forward to seeing you on Sunday.
You so much.
Thank you. So whenever Rafael is ready?
Thank you very much to give me the opportunity to be with you guys this month for Independence Day, and I enjoy my time with my grandson and my family and all the people from Latin America, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Okay, so we will move on to oral communications, number one. This is the opportunity for members of the public to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda. At this time, I have one slip from Michelle Salmon. Would you like to come up?
I have a couple of things. One, I hope that with the Caltrain Station that they do commit to keeping the elevator operational, clean, and safe. There's been many times that have been there, and it's not been operational. One of the things I wanted to bring up is I'm very proud of us for having so many car charging stations in Brisbane that are now online. We have several in the parking lot here, several at the Mission Blue, and some that are coming online at the Park and Ride. But one of the things that's a little bit distressing is I went to the memorial for Bob Wilson, and it was, of course, a full house at the Mission Blue, packed to the gunwales, people parked all the way down, because there was also a ballgame going on. And there were these charging places that people weren't using. I mean, I parked there, because I was only going to be there half an hour, but I thought during events, they should be able to be used for regular parking, since there's not eight people there charging their cars during a memorial service. And also, sometimes it's hard to come and park here, because there's all charging stations. And so the sign that was there was just a little bit threatening. And when we first talked about having charging stations at the Mission Blue when we were in OSEC, it was my understanding that we weren't going to have these draconian signs that you'll get towed if you park there during an event when there's no one charging. So I'd kind of like us to have some kind of medium ground there, where if there's an event and parking's at a premium, and there's no one charging their car, that we should be allowed to park there for special events and not worry about getting towed. So that's what I wanted to say. On the other one, other thing I wanted to say is a happy birthday, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on oral communications, number one? Seeing no hands, do we have anyone online that would like to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar. Can I get an approval on items E, F, G, and H?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. We will move on to old business, item I, which is consider adoption and resolution approving an agreement for the purchase and sale of vacant city property in Crocker Park, located generally south of West Hill Road, west of South Hill Place, and west of 151 South Hill Place. There's no APN, and there is a match attached to our agenda. So a staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Angry, would you put up the map for the benefit of the council and the community, please? The city of Brisbane owns a vacant landlocked parcel located in Crocker Park. The parcel's about 28,000 square feet and adjoins property that is currently developed and leased to the Pepsi Frito Lay Company for distribution. The vacant parcel is part of a former rail spur that Southern Pacific Railroad sold to the McKesson Corporation, and the city subsequently acquired that from McKesson in 1995 as part of a real estate transaction between McKesson and the city concerning the development of Crocker Park. Earlier this year, in February, council received an agenda report concerning the potential sale of this parcel. After discussion, council adopted a resolution declaring this property as surplus land and directed staff to return the item to the council if and when there's a potential purchaser of the property. Staff sent required notices under the Surplus Lands Act that the property was available to school districts, recreation districts, and affordable housing providers. We received no interest from any of those persons to purchase the property. And accordingly, we then had conversation with the, with a potential purchaser who was interested in buying the property for roughly $718,250. To that end, the buyers have signed a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property for that amount. The purchase price is mentioned is seven, under the purchase agreement, is $718,250. The buyers will submit to the Community Development Department an application to improve the property with paving, fencing, and lighting, and the city's approval of such improvements is a condition of the buyer's purchase. Other than the property being used as a hiking path and a drainage canal, the grant deed will restrict the use of the property exclusively for the parking of motor vehicles, for the employees at 151 West Hill Place, and for green space, and for access to the building at 151 West Hill. Promptly after the close of escrow, buyers are, will be committed to construct on the property a five-foot-wide hiking path and a five-foot-wide hiking path on the property at 151 West Hill Place. The buyers will grant the city easements for these purposes, and the city must approve the details of those hiking paths before they are constructed. City will have the responsibility to maintain and repair the hiking paths afterwards. As mentioned, there's a drainage canal on the property. The buyers will grant the city an easement for that purpose, but the buyers will be responsible for the regular cleaning, maintenance, and repair of the drainage. Assuming that the council approves this sale, it'll net the city about $718,000, and council will have the discretion to direct how those funds will be allocated. That concludes the agenda report. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the matter.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council for staff?
Not at this time, but I'll ask after public comment.
Okay. Karen, not at this time. Colleen, no. Okay, I don't have any questions for staff, but if we approve, except for this one, if we approve the, to go ahead, move forward with the sale, and it goes through, would this be the time for us to dedicate where those future funds could go? Or is that something you would want in a separate declaration? Or we can, can we give you an idea of where we'd like those funds to go at this time?
Through the chair, yes, we would like direction tonight on where you would like to see those funds allocated.
Okay, great, thank you. And with that, I'll open it up to public comments. I do have a slip from Michelle Salmon. Please come forward.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. That was a nice story that Michael Rush told, but that's not really the way that it happened. And I would like to protest that, how this happened, that the designation of talking about this as being surplus land happened in closed session well before it came to open session, and I don't think that that was correct. I really think that if you're talking about selling public land, or surplus land, or surplus anything, it should happen in a public meeting before you go into private real estate negotiations. So that's just a point that I want to make about that. I am against, you know, selling this property, and I have been all along. Several years ago, this came up, and we defeated it because the price wasn't high enough, but now I guess the price is right. And it came back again, and we've decided to go ahead and sell this parcel. If you look at the map, you'll see that it interfaces with the wildland habitat. I object to there being lights, a bunch of lights there at night. It impacts the, especially 24/7, you know, where it's lit all night. It impacts the migration of insects and birds, and that is a habitat. It's also a dangerous wildland interface for wildfire. We had a very bad wildfire there that was fortunately put out quickly. There's a lot of gorse there, and if we had not had access to bring a truck in to put that out, it could have been a much larger fire. And I've brought this up before, and you're all well aware of it. I think in addition to having a five-foot hiking easement, you need to have vehicle access available 24/7 for emergency vehicles up that way. It leads up to important hiking trails. It connects with the mountain, and it is a fire hazard. The close, every time we push against the habitat, it becomes more and more dangerous, having people smoking in the parking lot, having people throwing their garbage around, having trucks maybe backfiring or whatever. I think there needs to be a fire suppression system along the property line there, and I also think that there should not be lights all night. The other thing that we discussed was where the money goes, and this happened with the Shanghai Bakery land sale. It was, we had agreements that were not met. Brisbane has not benefited in any way, shape, or form from Shanghai Bakery acquiring the extra land, other than the money that we received that was used, was supposed to be used for buying open space, but I haven't seen any open space bought with that money. It was all used for the Crocker Trail and other things. I don't know what happened to it. It was $300,000, and part of that was supposed to be earmarked for buying acres. At the last council meeting, you heard the interest that the people have about doing everything we can to acquire and preserve the Brisbane acres. I would like, if, I'm sure you're going ahead with the sale, even though I'm opposed to it, but I would like every single bit of that $718,250 designated for acres purchase, period, not to be used to fix some, you know, trail that has nothing to do with actual habitat, open space, but to actually dedicate it to what it's supposed to be dedicated to, and what we had talked about in the last meeting. You had 220 people who signed a petition expressing how much they care about the acres, and I think it is important, and good faith that you do earmark this specifically for that, not for a bunch of consultants, not for paving that didn't last a season. I really feel strongly about this. This is the second time that we have sold off public land in that area that really didn't benefit us acquiring habitat. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no hands raised, do we have anyone online that would like to speak?
We have a hand raised from Roland.
Please go ahead, Roland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Very briefly, you were told earlier that this parcel does not have an APN, and I believe it does, and had it right in front of me. There we go. I believe that the APN number is 005300999. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we can open up discussion. Anybody want to go first?
Yeah.
Karen?
Can, lots of being going on with this, and I don't recall. Can somebody on council remind me what discussion, if any, we've had about what to do with this money? Because I just don't remember right now.
Wait, we did discuss that when we were talking about it, and this was, I believe, more in closed session, but I think it did come up when we discussed it in open session also, that we would want to designate this to purchase high-priority parcels in the acres and designate it as such. I know that one of our speakers did bring up that when the Shenkey property was sold, and I think that some of those funds went to getting a trail master plan, so that we would be ready and able if any funding came up. And I think that's one of the things that helped trigger getting some of the county match for the trails that we, the trail for the Crocker Trail. And, you know, I'm, I don't want to be going further than that, but, you know, I know that when we were talking, Cliff mentioned that there was a parcel in the acres that was for sale by a regular owner who's hoping to sell it to someone to develop it, and that was sort of where the price range was for that acre. And while I wouldn't say that we should be paying retail rates for properties, I mean, I do, I personally agree that we should put this money aside because it was donated as open space to us, and it's an original, in its original spirit of the gift, that we continue that with that spirit of the gift, that we are purchasing, using it to purchase back something that is going to have more habitat value, and also the fact that they are granting us the easement, taking care of the drainage ditch, and providing hiking access, which really, right now, people have to trespass. And while that's not that big a deal for many people to trespass, I think it's really good to have a dedicated access to those unofficial trails on the mountain.
It was brought up two weeks ago when you mean. I just want to say it was two weeks ago that you all said that, not several months ago.
I think you captured everything, Terry. That is what we discussed, and the Shenkey property sale did go to those items that you mentioned. In, I agree with you. I think that this, that the money should go to acquisition of parcels on the San Fernando Mountain, dedicated as open space. Absolutely not for development, for the dedication of open space. You are correct. It is in the same spirit. The only thing that I would kind of put out there, if the council was okay with it, if there was a parcel that we purchased and it needed some help, some assistance, to be more habitat-ready, you know, maybe there are eucalyptus trees that need to be removed. Maybe there's some Scotch broom that needs to be removed, so that then we could plant grasses, habitat plants that benefit endangered species that are there.
So you're asking that the discretion of using the funds would be for maintenance of acres?
Correct.
Possibly maintenance of acres in addition to purchase?
Absolutely, because there might be parcels that we would like to buy. Absolutely, because there might be parcels that we would like to buy, but maybe with a little assistance from funds that we have, we can make them habitat.
Friendly.
You know, well, yeah, you know, just more value, more valuable, right? So just kind of giving the council a little bit more leeway to use those funds. But the fund should only be spent on San Bruno Mountain, in the Brisbane acres that we own.
Going.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I was on the Planning Commission, I opposed the sale of Shenkey Bakery property. And I would point out that it has been a problem consistently, because the covenants about them keeping it clear, it has been full of cigarette butts and garbage constantly, until the city gets called to go over there and talk to them, and then we go, it's fine, and then it happens over and over and over. I oppose the sale of this on the same problem, the same principle, but I will add one admonition, because I can count the votes here tonight and see I'm probably the only no vote. If there is to be a consideration of earmarking any proceeds to acres properties, I brought back the same map I had at the last council meeting, and you'll see there's two areas here, two large areas where we own city properties that are marked in blue, and there is one parcel right between them. And I'm going to give you the parcel number on each side, because I don't know what that one parcel number is. And I'll repeat it, 007-502-070. The parcel on the other side, 007-502-100. And I would strongly urge you consider that, because it would make all of these properties contiguous. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So any other discussion? Karen?
Yeah, well, the only comment I have regarding us spending the money on maintenance is, that's kind of nebulous, and who knows how much it would cost. I would prefer that we find other money through grants, maybe, for some of that cleanup, and spend as much of it as possible on the purchase of the best property we can get hold of. And if these two properties fit that bill, I'm all for that.
Well, certainly, we would have to find a willing buyer before anything can be done. And, you know, it was very clear from the people who spoke about the housing elements that we had discussed with SB9 compliance, that the mountain and habitat is certainly important to everybody in Brisbane. And I know it's important to the people here. I do think that while we're making a trade-off, for me, of selling the property, I think having the easement granted to us, where there is a right for us to access the mountain from that property, is really important. And I think that it gives us a nexus to look at how the trail study of what the existing and what the master plan that we had done, when we had spent the money to do that master plan, how that can possibly tie in, and whether we or the county want to tie in the end of Crocker onto the mountain. And that's something that, that's not for me to decide right now, because I think there's other implications by opening up more trails onto the mountain, and there's more things that can happen when you have more people going up them. And also, certainly, you know, the county, if you're looking at a real official trail, wants to make sure it's ADA, and it has all the other things which, in that Devil's Arroyo area, would be very difficult to achieve for the county to be able to want to do that. But I think that it opens back up the historical trail and the game trail that's already there. And we won't go into what's up there and what secret places, but, you know, for me, I think it's something that we can get a better, better use of another piece of property compared to that piece of property because of its landlocked nature.
Madam Mayor, if I may say one other thing. In terms of the maintenance of all of these acres properties that the city has in their protection, I think, just to comment, in terms of the maintenance, which we all know is just a lot of money, I think we can start thinking in terms of adopt an acre, maybe asking some of our local businesses if they would be willing to do that. Maybe we could come up with some very expensive donations and do some raffles, so that we can, it may sound like nothing, but in the absence of funds, if we can, at least every year, say, we did some remediation on these, or we at least dealt with the most egregious problems. I think we can actually start attacking that in some creative ways. People used to adopt the highway, and it would be a large measure of goodwill if some of the Brisbane businesses showed that they care about the acres and the health and the safety of the residents who live below them, in terms of wildfire as well.
Well, you know, that's interesting you bring that up, Colin, because we know that approximately about a third of our citizens, our residents, do pay into, you know, the HCP, whereas folks in central Brisbane don't, right? We don't do that. But, you know, maybe there could be a program where you could, you know, have a parcel.
We're sort of delving off of the topic of what we are agendized for.
Okay, you're correct.
Although we're talking about how to spend money, and so, you know, that, I guess, has a little bit of nexus, and I'll sort of not quite look at the city attorney for that. You know, they're looking for direction on how to use the funds if we move forward with this. And I agree with everybody at the table. I think the number-one priority is to use it for purchase of acres that would, you know, benefit our holdings there and benefit the habitat in general. If the two parcels that Colleen pointed out, you know, are available or, you know, make better sense, certainly, we should look at it. And I would like to say that the City of Brisbane has been doing remediation on acres as we can. We can afford it. We've been working with the OSEC, Open Space and Ecology Committee, to determine what work needs to be done, and where, and how we can afford it. Some of it is done with hands on the ground and a community effort, but the important stuff costs money. And so we always have to look at the costs before we can determine what we can do in a given year. I think that Colleen's idea of looking of other ways to raise funds for habitat restoration is a great one, and I think that the people at OSEC would be happy to, you know, work with you on that or share ideas, and, you know, maybe we get a city contest going to look at those kind of things. But again, I digress. So as far as this goes, would we have a consensus to use it for purchase only, which I would agree to purchase only?
Yes.
So, I mean, if that's the pleasure of the council, of course, I'm going to go with that. And I think, you know, if we allowed us as a council to have a little bit more room to apply some money for habitat restoration of the acres that we buy, to bring them up to a level that is more appropriate for the habitat, I hear what you're saying about...
Should it be from other funding sources, though?
Well, here's the thing, right? We don't, I mean, we can say we don't want to spend the money. By giving us some room, we have the flexibility, but we don't have to spend it, right? We're the ones that would be the decision-makers on that. It just gives us a little bit more room to say, okay, you know what? We, this purchase, this property, it's got four eucalyptus trees on it. It would be good to remove those eucalyptus trees and use this money. If we wanted to, we don't have to. It's just adding that additional layer of flexibility for the council.
Would you, would we want to word it where a maximum of 20% of the money is used for habit... I'm, sorry.
Habitat improvement?
I'm just wondering what would make Cliff happy, how we can negotiate this, where we're not putting it in stone that it had to be used for only purchase, and we couldn't mitigate some damages to the property? I mean, it might have an old burnt-out caterpillar on it that needs to be hauled out to. Who knows?
Bath tubs.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we should, I think we're mature enough to have, you know, an understanding of what would be an appropriate amount to spend. I don't need to use the percentage.
I'm looking at legal. What would we need to nail down if we're going to nail this down?
Well, I'm not sure you have to reach that decision tonight. I think it's going to be contentious, and once the money comes in, once staff has had opportunity to discuss with the various property owners what might be for sale, and how much, you know, how much money we're talking about, I think once we have that information, then we have enough information to give to the council, and it can decide whether it wants to allocate all or some of it for maintenance, restoration, or purchase. I think I'm hearing direction in terms of where you want to go with it, and I think that's, that will work for this evening, because really, the only item before you is the resolution to sell it. I think we've heard, the city manager and I have heard direction in terms of what you want to do once we get the money, but that could be a separate discussion unless the city manager feels otherwise.
I would add through the chair that, to Michael's point, I think the direction's clear, and as I think the council knows, over the next, you know, up to the next budget year, we're going to be doing significant budget work. And one of the items I'm taking away is an opportunity to look at our budget to see if we can carve out specific areas that can address these kinds of issues moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, and I appreciate, and I like the language of maintenance, restoration, or purchase, and, you know, I would probably put it in, and I'm not sure if that's the order you put it in, but I'd put purchase, restoration, or maintenance in the opposite order. That might have been just how my brain worked. But on the item at hand, should we authorize our city manager to go ahead and negotiate on the sale of this property? Can I get a first and a second?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the direction of the funds, the staff has noted our discussion. So that moves us to new business item J. Consider adopting a resolution supporting the Bay Shore below Van Waters Rogers bus stop relocation design project and submitting an application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for cycle-two ACR TDM grant program. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me okay? I always hear, but I'm too quiet.
Loud and clear.
All right, I'm really close. This is a little bit confusing and interesting, and I appreciate that you wanted to put it on new business. There is, the Transportation Authority had another cycle of grants. Those come out about every two years, and they had a couple of options to go for a bike pad project, or kind of a transit congestion relief TDM project. The city has applied, turned in our application to relocate the bus stop on the northbound side of Bay Shore of Van Waters and Rogers to north of the intersection. There are a few reasons to want to do this. One is that Samtrans guidelines prefer bus stops to be north of, or on the far side of a signalized intersection. Another is that we know that the users, a lot of the users of this bus stop that live at the Mobile Home Park, have historically taken the direct path across the street, not at the signal, to get to that bus stop, which seems very unsafe at a 45 mile an hour road, where we know that sometimes people travel up to 60 miles per hour. And thirdly, it is part of the Berkeley Safe Trek Plan that would give us space to add pedestrian infrastructure through that segment from San Bruno up to Old County. Part of the plan is to move the bus stop to that side. So we made this application, and we were in communication with the Transportation Authority, and the maximum application amount was $200,000, and they required at least a 10% match. So our original application was for $200,000 with a 10% match, with which we could only design the project and then purchase the bus shelter minimal amenities. But they told us that the program was undersubscribed, and if we wanted to apply for more, they might be able to grant us that money. So the entire cost to design and construct is $600,000. Now, they thought that the cost might be higher, and they proposed, they said, if you put in, if it was a million and you put in 500,000, we could probably get you that five. So we came up with this 25% match to not kind of unseemingly say, we're only going to give you 10%, when they're going to go beyond what the guidelines for the grant were. So we wrote in our application, we're asking for 200,000, but if you have more money and you give us 450, we'll match it with 150,000 and be able to build the entire improvements. So we are asking for a resolution upholding that set of terms.
So the predominant users of the bus stop are the people at the trailer park, at the Mobile Home Park?
Some users from the VWR property, or now the Amazon property, also use that bus stop.
Some of my other comments, I mean, I was the one that asked about the fuzzy math, which is why the 200,000 had a 10% match, and the 450 had 150,000 match. And part of that was, I didn't understand how a bus shelter could be 600 to $1 million when you can build a home for that.
Right, well, there's design, and then there are other physical improvements. There's, we're going to put a sidewalk up to it, we're going to improve the crossings on Bay Shore, it may need a small retaining wall in the back, you need a shelter itself. It's similar to what we did, although there's more concrete, possibly, at Geneva and Bay Shore southbound 10 or 15 years ago. I don't know if you remember, that stop was in kind of gravel, and then we added the ADA curb gutter and sidewalk. They actually want their pad where the bus stop stops to be concrete. It's pricey.
Okay, thank you. Out of any other questions from, please, Cliff.
Thank you. Yeah, my questions are similar to Terry's. So it'd be an additional 130,000, so that would make it 150,000 total for the 600,000.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. And then, yeah, right, it does seem like a very expensive bus stop, but you explained why. And so, but say, it doesn't cost that much, right? This is what we're budgeting. So then, where does the leftover money go? Does that stay with us, or do we have to give that money back?
That's a great question. I would probably have to check. I would hope, and maybe go so far as to assume that it's the proportion that they're funding, so we would share in the savings if it were less.
Okay, I mean, you know, sometimes if you work hard, and, you know, you're smart with how you build something, you should be the, you know, you should receive the benefit of that.
Yeah, and we're required by law to take the low bid, so if the low bid comes in under, we're in a good position.
Got it, got it, okay. You know, just kind of looking at this, for me, it kind of doesn't really make sense to do the 200,000 and just design, and then like maybe purchase and put it in some warehouse. It seems like, yeah, let's go for the full 600,000, build it, and then we can put it into use. So, but if we did do the 200,000 option, where would we store the shelter?
Be storing that at the courtyard.
The courtyard, got it.
And I can't speak for the TA, but it was them that suggested that we apply for the entire project, so we're hopeful that we do get all of the money. entire project, so we're hopeful that we do get all of the money.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so you feel pretty confident we would get the whole amount?
I feel fairly confident, yes, yes.
All right. This isn't your first rodeo, so you know. All right, thanks.
Colleen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Karen, if we could put up that aerial photograph again?
Kind of segueing on what Councilmember Lance brought up. If there was additional funding, you've already mentioned that there would be sidewalks and a retaining wall put in on the east side. I don't see any improvements on the west side, and there are no sidewalks from the Mobile Home Park to the stoplight. As part of this project, are there sidewalks on the west side? Or if there are additional funds with a nice low bid coming in, could we perhaps put some improvements in on the east side leading up to that stoplight?
It's a good idea. I would have to go through again the grant guidelines, and we could certainly make that request if the funds, if the bids do come in lower and we have additional funds, it's a good idea, space permitting. I'm not sure if we have space along the front edge of the Mobile Home Park without changing parking or the road diet that's proposed. You know, it's a little premature to talk about that, but maybe north of the bus stop to the intersection.
But if you look, if you just look at the photograph, look at the Mobile Home Park, you can see the spot where Van Waters comes out, that's the traffic light, and all you see is green. And I'm sure Councilmember Cunningham can tell you of her travails, walking with the former city manager alongside Bay Shore, which you've mentioned, some cars going 55 and 60, and I've clocked them at 65.
I've clocked them at 70.
Yeah, so, I mean, literally, if we're talking about people walking from the Mobile Home Park and we're concerned about their safety, even that little green stretch, because it's on a curve if you're going southbound, they're in some danger there, because the cars come around there very fast. So I'd like to see that possibility.
If I may follow up today?
Sure.
So with the CCAG project that's coming through right now that we approved, the fiber optic, part of, I don't know who got them to do it, but as part of that trench digging that they did along there to put in the fiber optic, they've also widened the bike pad lane.
Shoulder.
Whether they did it deliberately or by accident, I don't know, but I have seen that it's in most places in this area at least two feet wider than it was before, and flat and walkable. You could put a baby stroller, you could put a wheelchair, anything along there now. So by accident, that looks a little different now, a little safer, I would say. You know, we're trying to get everybody to take public transportation. If we don't bite the bullet and make public transportation an easier thing for people to do, we're never going to get anywhere. So as much as I think a $600,000 bus stop is pretty outrageous, I think we've got to do it.
So were you finished with your questions for staff?
Well, I would just ask, since I know Karen is very innovative with creating road separation for pedestrians, maybe, I have noted that they widened it, maybe there's something, even without putting in a sidewalk, that we could put in fencing or something so that we don't get that moth effect coming around that corner? Just anything to protect those pedestrians. It's not a huge long stretch, so it wouldn't take much. I was going to say a guardrail, but that just conjured up a horrible visual, but anything, just even if it was for now temporary and someday we'd have sidewalks, just to give them that little bit of protection, I'd feel better about it.
Yeah, not out of the question at all to do something like that.
So one of the questions I have is, right at this point, you're asking us to approve the, applying for the 200,000 grant, which has a 10% match. If we don't get the balance, are we required by law to go ahead with the project? And where we will be paying the balance of the 600,000, and then we'd be 400,000 out of pocket?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
We could just store the bus stop in our courtyard for however long it took and...
And have a design ready to...
And have a design ready, but we would be under no obligation to build, because when I was, and maybe it was under something else that I was looking at, that I got the impression that we would be under the obligation to build.
No, no, definitely not.
Okay. And I'm getting a nod of the head from legal? Okay. So, do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? And I have a hand raised from Michelle Salmon.
Could you put the picture back up? If you look at this picture, that is a long distance between where the bus stop is now and the proposed bus stop from where the people are at both, at the trailer park. And that makes that bus stop very close to the other bus stop, which isn't on the picture, but just a little bit ahead of that. And I don't think that's a good idea. If we actually move the bus stop more southerly, it could actually help maybe people coming down Old Bay Shore, San Bruno Avenue on the backside, servicing people to Larry Hill, people from Joy Avenue, people, you know, all in that whole area, and make that bus stop really a much more active, useful bus stop for people in Brisbane. And you could even put, you know, a stairway coming up from the old Van Waters and Rogers building. So that bus stop was really a lot more useful, and I know that there's the danger of crossing the road there, but maybe put in some kind of, you know, flashing crossing light, which we've done in other places, or maybe even, you know, a temporary crosswalk or something. Because moving that bus stop that far, the people who live there, they're not going to want to walk that far. I mean, that's a long ways if you can't walk well, or you're old, or you're, at that point, you might as well walk all the way to Brisbane, you know? It just doesn't seem really a good idea to move. I know what Caltrans wants, but that puts those two bus stops really close together, that one and the one at Old County Road. Whereas if the bus stop actually moved the other direction, it would probably be more useful servicing the businesses and other homes along there. I wish this picture was bigger so that you could see better what I'm talking about, but so that when the shuttle bus comes down off of San Bruno Avenue and then just turns and stops there, and they often stop there and wait like 15 minutes until they go again, because I've been on it when it's done that before, continuing on its route. But I think moving the bus stop is a really bad idea. It's not servicing, but they have to walk so far to get to the bus that it just makes it less accessible. I think we really should revisit this plan. And all money aside, I mean, it's expensive, it's very expensive, but I don't think that I would move the bus stop any further north. It's already a trigger, hair-trigger signal light there because of our agreement, original agreement with Van Waters and Rogers, so I don't know.
Doesn't make sense. Thank you. Do we have anyone online that would like to speak, or anyone else in the audience? Everybody's saying, no, I'm staying out of this one.
CMF had her hand raised.
Please go ahead.
Hi, Chris Lorcaskey again. Michelle said just about everything I was going to say. The only thing that I would add is that she is spot on, there actually already is a stairway from the Van Waters building just south of the current location of the bus stop. So I'm totally with her, we should not be putting this bus stop further away from the people who need it, and I think there are opportunities to bring it, tuck it down a little bit further south. If you put it north, there's a risk that SAMTrans is going to try and make things more effective and close one of those two bus stops. That means we'd lose one or the other. We want to keep them further apart and put them where they're more useful to the people who actually need them. You might even check. Another problem with that proposal is it would mean that rather than using that stairway that's there, the people from Van Waters would be walking up where traffic is leaving the Van Waters. They'd be walking up the street because there's no sidewalk there. So you'd be creating a potential risk for pedestrians using the same path as the vehicles. Please keep the bus stop further south. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online that would like to speak? Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, or the public comments. Having seen the graphic, I do believe that a lot of the concerns are valid about leaving the bus stop where it is, but I do have a question. So people get on the bus there to go north. Where do they get off?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, maybe they're going all the way to San Francisco, I'm not...
No, no, I mean, where do they get off when they come home?
Oh...
They have to get off north of Old County Road.
No, there's a stop at VWR on the southbound side, on the west side.
Is there, can you show that picture again?
There is, we haven't really looked at improving that particular stop because at some point there was a development application for a condo building there, and they were going to have to improve the bus stop in the southbound direction. All there is is a little SAMTrans sign there, there's nothing else that clarifies.
Okay, so a bus does stop there, but they just stop in traffic?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they pull into the bike lane, I'm not, I don't think I've observed it.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
I understand what Michelle said and what Chris said. I think what would be absolutely necessary if that happened, you can't have a crosswalk light. I watch other cities and cars go right through them. You would have to have the bona fide traffic signal at San Bruno Avenue in Bay Shore. So you've got one other additional cost, and I would like to hear again from Karen about that in terms of a feasibility. And just kind of thinking, because I go that way a lot, the walk north is probably pretty close to what the walk south would be to San Bruno. So I'm not adverse to it, because I would be concerned also that SAMTrans would go, they're too close, but the distance, I think, is relatively close. It would be safer walking south to cross there, but again, I think a traffic light.
Well, either way, they're not increasing bus traffic, so we only have the one bus an hour, right?
Yeah.
And so the same amount of people are going to be crossing the street, whether it's to a new and shiny bus stop or to an old and unshiny bus stop, in theory, correct?
Correct.
Because it's not giving us any additional service.
No.
Just giving you a nicer place to hang out.
Yes.
And an easier place for the bus to pull over.
Yes. Madam Mayor? I do think, though, it's worth considering moving it south by virtue of the fact that the people who live up the hill, like on Joy, could utilize that stop, and I'll bet they're not utilizing the current stop.
No.
As well as people that live on Gladys or further up the hill, Harold, Thomas, any of those, it would be close by.
Except then they have to walk up the hill home.
They bought that house.
Can I comment?
Please.
You probably don't know this information, but around the same time, we have applied for a highway safety improvement grant to signalize San Bruno and Bay Shore. And I hadn't thought about where the bus stops more southerly, so I would propose possibly that we still apply for this, because we could turn down the funds and see what happens with the other grant. We'd probably need to be in communication with SAMTrans about relocating the stop, but if we have a signal at San Bruno and Bay Shore, it's not a terrible idea to put the stop there. Now, would the TA give us this grant to put the stop further south? I can't promise that, but they might.
Wouldn't that be a change of work order, and those happen every day?
Yeah. Just because we applied for it at one location, I mean, potentially, but again, I can't speak for them.
Yes, Karen?
Okay, so I don't know if you can pull up the overhead map of that area for people to see. So I just pulled it up, and if we move...
Oh, of a bigger blowout?
Yeah, if we move that bus stop south, I was just thinking about what you just said, the traffic lights at Bay Shore and San Bruno Avenue are potentially coming up. If there's a traffic light there and on the north side, just north of the traffic light is the bus stop, that makes a lot of sense for everybody. It makes sense for the people in Joy Avenue, San Bruno Avenue, Anis, blah, 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 McLean. It's convenient for Van Waters from the center of their property, and it would be very convenient and safe for the people who live in the Mobile Home Park.
Yeah, yeah, no, I do, and I agree with that.
See?
Yeah, so, no, I know. So my question for you, Karen, is that, so we apply for the grant, we get it, is there a timeline for which to use those funds and then you have to give them back?
Yes, there's a timeline. They'll give us an agreement to sign. That normally takes a few months, they have to go to their board, they have to make the recommendations, bring them to their board, prepare an agreement, we review the agreement.
No, what I'm talking about is that once we receive the money, is there a timeline for which we have to do the work?
Yes.
Okay, so what would that be? Because I agree with my colleagues that moving the bus stop further south in connection with a new intersection at Bay Shore and San Bruno with a light that a pedestrian can hit the button, the traffic stops because there are red lights, and that person can safely go across to the other side and then get on the bus or wait at the bus stop, that really makes sense. So, but that might take some time, as from what you're saying, right? And it might also, you know, require another contribution from the city, just like this one is, or perhaps not, or usually they do. So kind of walk us through, is the best you can, put it on your, you know, you're trying to put out your crystal ball and predict?
Well, right, we'd need to successful, be successful with two grant applications, and the highway safety improvement grant is through the feds, through the state, administered by Caltrans. Those take longer. So it could be, I don't have the timelines in front of me, it could be possible, but it could be challenging to do both of them. But again, with this grant, if we don't enter into an agreement, just we don't even have to take the money.
It goes away, I know, I hear you. Okay, so then, you know, we apply for the grant, we get the $600,000, then I guess we, as a council, have to give direction to you in regards to where the location would be, either in the same location or a new location?
Yeah, and that...
Which would be further north, or is it, if we apply for this, it has to be in the north?
I don't know the answer to that, but an agreement for those funds would come back to council, so there'd be time to address it.
Okay, and if it comes back to the council, and then if the council is not satisfied, then the deal just drops and we're not out any money and those funds just go somewhere else?
That's correct.
Okay.
Colleen had something you wanted to add? Colleen, you had something you wanted to add.
Yes, I just was going to say with the conversations we've had, subcommittee planning with Councilmember Cunningham about safety, and I can't remember, if you could tell me again, the name of the study that was done by Berkeley?
Oh, yeah.
The SafeTrack? SafeTrack, right. There's all along been a concern with trying to slow the traffic down. And I do recall months ago where this came up, and Randy had mentioned that we can use our signalized lights, but that at some point to do that, we'd need to have a light at Bay Shore. I mean, not at Bay Shore, but at Bay Shore and San Bruno. So this might be kind of getting us a step in the direction. And I was curious, when you said you'd applied for that light, what was the thinking behind applying for that? Was that part of the whole SafeTrack?
No, I don't remember if SafeTrack actually recommended a signal there, but we know that everyone, the council, staff, and the community has wanted a signal to be there. And we had, in the time period that you need to apply for the grants, we, this is a safety grant, so it's based on how many serious accidents you've had. And we had enough in the time period to meet kind of the barrier to apply.
Okay, great, thank you.
And don't forget Complete Streets. I'm sure that, I mean, I know they heavily were active in attempting to get a light at Bay Shore and San Bruno.
Yeah, that was their first recommendation, short of disallowing the left turns, was signalize that intersection.
So at this point, you're just asking for authorization to apply for the $200,000 that is in works and upping it to another $400,000 so that it might actually complete the job if we throw in 150,000 to 170,000?
Correct, but 150 total.
Okay. It said you'd be coming back for another, okay, for a total of 150, okay.
Yeah, so I'll make, yeah.
I will support that, too.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to give direction to staff to, because it sounds, from what Karen is saying, it sounds like if we put the 150,000 in it, we're going to get the 600. So I would give staff that, you know, room to go for the 600,000.
I agree with that.
I don't think that's what they're asking for in this. They're saying that if they get the second grant, they'd be coming back to ask for the additional. Is that correct?
I thought it was like an either or.
Because I'm not sure that staff in their staff report is saying, we have the additional 150 from the general funds to be given.
Well, right, I don't know if we spelled that out, but in the resolution, we did say commits to increasing the commitment of matching funds to 150,000 in the event the additional funding request in the amount of 450,000 is granted.
Okay. And Jeremy, we have that money if we are making that commitment?
I would say yes. I'm going to say that at 85 or 90% confidence level.
Okay.
And we're going to have another bite at the apple, too, right? It's going to come back before we say yes.
It will, but I'm just trying to make sure we all know what we're voting on because I was a little confused to start. So we have a motion?
A second.
And a second. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Okay. Gee, I think that's bringing us to the end.
Yes.
Okay, staff report, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
Thank you, Mayor and council. A number of exciting activities coming up in the next couple of weeks. And I'm going to go a little past the next council meeting to report on the big ones coming up as well. Coastal cleanup day, so we hope people come out this Saturday to do that. If you aren't on the coast, I hope you go to the Sierra Point Yacht Club Regatta Day. Very exciting. On Sunday, as we heard earlier, the mayor will be speaking at the Caltrain electrification event at the Bay Shore Station. On October 1st in San Mateo, the county will be holding a loneliness to light gathering that's to help reduce isolation and loneliness in the community. And two big events coming up in October, Dana Park, which is Brisbane's premier event, and the Star City San Bruno Mountain Half Marathon. So I hope people are able to participate. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor, council matters. Does anyone have any countywide assignments and subcommittees that they'd like to report out on? I don't show that we had any subcommittees, but I don't know about counties.
CCAG last Thursday. Yet again, a slew of bills sitting on the governor's desk that we do not support. So hopefully he gets bored and doesn't sign them. You know, there's only so much we can do at the county to oppose these things we think are infringing on our, on our people. Everything has been unanimous no on certain bills. But we're one county out of 58, so we'll see where these end up going. That was kind of it for that.
May I add on to that?
Sure.
From a reliable group that is following a lot of housing legislation, I received an email today that, and I've not seen anything since, that the housing bills specifically that are sitting on Newsom's desk for signatures, that he had intended to sign or not sign today, and also announced some new bills that he wants to see in the next legislative session. So perhaps tomorrow we'll find out more about that.
Anything else to report on?
No.
And were you finished? Okay. I had an airport land use meeting in regards to childcare policies in the environments of San Carlos Airport. It was a very interesting debate, and no decisions were made. Cliff?
None.
I thought you wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You did want to bring something up, I think.
Yes, thank you for reminding me.
No worries.
Jeez. Yes, so, you know, some folks in town in the Northeast Ridge have asked me to, well, they were asking me questions of, you know, in the 2000, I guess it was 2018 election, I think it was, I don't know, maybe it was 2016, you know, there was three locations at the Northeast Ridge for signs. There was the one that we have right now, which is at the signboard, and then at the entrance to, I guess it's Mission, I think it's, went in Industrial Park, and then the one by off of Guadalupe. And so they said, well, you know, a lot of people, you know, they might go up one of the entrances to their home, but others go the other direction. So they never see any of the signs of the people who are running for office. And so it's like, okay, well, you know, so they asked me, why do we take those away? And I was like, well, I don't know. So I reached out to the mayor to see if we could agendize maybe at our next meeting to see if we wanted to add those two locations. So that's, that's, that's it, you know? I mean, the other thing is that they felt that incumbents had an advantage because for, you know, people know us and people who are new, this at least gives them another opportunity for people who live in that part of Brisbane to see that they're running for office.
So while this isn't agendized, so we can't get into discussion on this, I believe that our sign policy has not changed in the past history of what we allowed and what we haven't allowed. And I did clarify that with, when we added, the last time we added, we added the signboard area at both sites, both in town and up at the ridge, and the, I believe, the entrance on Guadalupe. But I don't think we've had any other places that have.
We did, we did. We had the location that was across the street. There's a grassy area in, I guess it's South Hill, maybe, so.
West Hill, maybe?
West, one of those. That entrance that goes up to this, thank you. Yeah, so this is from 2018, and it was on West Hill and Silver Spot. We had a location at Guadalupe Canyon Parkway and Mission Blue, and then the Monarch and Mission Blue, and then Old County Road. So this was.
So these are the current locations that they're allowed?
Those were the previous locations. And then the, in 2019, there was a change through ordinance to come up to the current two locations.
Okay. So my recommendation, in my personal correspondence with Cliff, was that this would be an appropriate topic to discuss after the current election, that during an election, it's not the time to be changing things. And more importantly, that it'd be very likely that anyone who was running and had this as a, an issue for them, would need to recuse themselves from this discussion about adding sign placing. And so that would leave me to discuss it.
I don't know. I mean, I think we should probably get legal.
But I know we can't get into too much discussion, so.
Well, we can, we could add, add some clarity to the last comments, or we, I think what we're looking for, based on what I'm hearing in the conversation, is there any direction to put this on an agenda soon or later? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, so if we get into locations and we talk about people on the ridge potentially leaving from Guadalupe, you have a similar problem in central Brisbane because I go out the back way all the time. And so I might not see the community park every day. So then we're essentially looking at more locations. Just, I think that has to be part of the picture, then.
Yeah, well, you know, Colleen, in the Northeast Ridge, you can't put a sign on your lawn, right? Right?
I understand.
In central Brisbane, though, as we know already, there's a bunch of signs out. So, you know, if you go up San Bruno Avenue and down, I mean, there's signs, right? So with the Northeast Ridge, we're limiting them with just one location. At least this gives a location at every entrance and exit.
Through the chair, through the chair, we would like to, yeah, we'd like to point back to the question at hand from Councilmember Lentz, whether to put this on an agenda sooner or later. Thank you.
So would we have an opinion from legal if the people who are affected by this upcoming discussion would need to recuse themselves?
There would no, there would not be a financial conflict of interest to do that. So there would not be a legal reason for anyone to, to conflict themselves out in terms of participating in that, in that matter. There's a practical issue because it's in an ordinance. If you're going to change it, you would have to do it on an urgency basis if you were going to get it in before the election. Otherwise, you introduce it, second reading, 30 days later, you know, you're past the election at that point. So to the city manager's point, council may want to just decide whether or not it wants to agendize it sooner rather than, sooner or later.
Don't look at me.
Personally, I'm happier with less signs, but I don't really see the need to agendize it as an urgency matter.
You know, I'm just taking the feedback from members of the community.
I understand.
So I think that we should. Because we're in an election, it does make sense to do it sooner than later. So, you know, it's just one of those things where, yeah, you know, we're public servants, we should listen to the public. This provides greater access for candidates to get their message out, and we used to do it. If it wasn't something that we had done before, I would say, yeah, all right. But this is something that we allowed, for whatever reason, the council decided to take it off. So I think we should do it sooner.
Again, we're getting into more discussion than we should because I would ask why, there had to be a reason why we did less, and is that something we should consider? And I don't recall the history on that. I wasn't on the council then, but I don't recall the history.
I can, with your permission, council, looking at the July 18th, 2019 minutes, so they're just action minutes, I can only speak to that. There was a consideration as an urgency ordinance to take immediate effect regarding these issues. There isn't a lot of language about the specificity. I can say that the vote at the time was a 4-0 with one absent. Councilmembers Cunningham, Lentz, O'Connell, and Davis voted aye. There were no noes, and council member, former councilmember Conway was absent.
And that was to restrict the sign locations?
Correct. And if you give me a second, I can refer back to the agenda here and give you some information. Please feel free to continue discussing whether you're going to put it on a future agenda. Okay, it looks like this did go through the Planning Commission, and unfortunately, I don't have that item in front of me. What was before the council at the time, and I'm just going to read this verbatim, although signs have historically been placed throughout the city, it is proposed that public locations be limited to the four locations identified below and further described in the draft ordinance, West Hill Drive and Silver Spot, Guadalupe Canyon and Mission Blue, Monarch Drive and Mission Blue, and Old County Road across from the community park. Referring back to the action minutes, there isn't information here that suggests why that recommendation wasn't, wasn't approved by the council. It just says that the council chose to, two sites, Monarch Drive and Mission Blue and Old County Road across the park. Thank you.
Sadly enough, I was on the Planning Commission then, and now I can remember we dealt with it, and I can't remember why it actually was reduced, but there were.
Reasons. And I'm sure that we can go and look at the July 18th, 2020 meeting, but we did visit this four years ago, and those decisions were made then. So we can take a look at it and see if there's anything that has changed from that decision and go there, from there to decide if we need to agendize this for an emergency ordinance.
Through the chair, I suspect there was a robust discussion at the council, and I think staff just needs to go back and perhaps review that.
Well, I'm sure that we could go queue it up tonight with a glass of wine.
Welcome to.
Okay, and I sort of packed away my stuff. City clerk, are there any written communications?
Council received communications from Nancy Loxamana regarding item H, Dana Dilworth regarding Cracker Park sale. And that's it.
Great. Are there any members of the public wishing to make a comment on oral communications, number two, on an item that was not on our agenda? Please come up.
Yeah, we've gone round and round on this whole sign issue, and it wasn't on the agenda, so I think I can talk about it. Because I've had, you know, one of the restrictions when we did Measure JJ, and restrictions when you first ran, and moving this and moving that. and moving this and moving that. And this sign issue, right now Brisbane is already littered with signs. And it's questionable. Some of those seem to be on property that is actually city right of way, even though it's someone's yard. And it's like overwhelming, overwhelming. And it makes it worse because all of those signs are made out of plastic. And we toured South San Francisco scavengers today. And it upsets me to see so much waste with all these plastic signs. There is no recycling those, you know that. Reusing them maybe four years later and four years later and four years later. But there's no recycling them. And I think that giving more opportunity to put out more signs is so contrary to what we need to be doing that the more signs I see from somebody, the less I'm likely to vote from them at this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
And through the chair, it may be worth noting that residents can call the city and if there are signs improperly on public property, we will remove them. So it's just a good reminder for people, if they do see something, give us a call.
And I will say that when I was running and signs inadvertently got in the wrong place, City Hall was very good about collecting them and saying, you have a pile of signs. But mine weren't plastic. Anyway. We will move on to our last item, which is adjournment at 9...
16.
No, is that 16?
Yep.
For three more seconds.
Okay. 9:16 it is. And we are adjourned.